The appointed time has arrived. The chair opens the July 5, 2023, meeting at the Mashpee Planning Board at Town Hall in the Quay Room 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The time is 7:05 PM. I welcome everyone here tonight. We're being broadcast live on Channel 18 and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, Would you please stand for the flag, the legions of the flag? Dennis, would you lead, please?
Flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, in his book with liberty and justice.
Approval of the minutes. Have you had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
And are there any edits or changes? No?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of June 21, 2023, as presented.
Show me.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, passes. Okay. Approval not required. Okay, this is my first time ever seeing this, and I understand that this approval here is not, if we agree that they have a road and a way to access the lots, we don't need to do a special permit public hearing. The applicant is John and Carla Mullen, trustees, Carla E. Mullen, 2012 Trust, 188 Pimlico Pond, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, Assessor's Map 2, Parcel 191 and 192. Excuse me. The request is, purpose of the A and R is to divide lots 1 and 2 as shown on the plan, creating new lots A and B. The remaining area of Lot 1 after division will be combined with Lot B, and the remaining area of Lot 2 after division will be combined with Lot A. Evan, does the plan drawn by Cape and Island Engineering show access from the street to these lots?
The plan shows, it's two existing parcels, one developed with, improved to the single-family dwelling, both with plus or minus 100, one with 130 feet of frontage, one with 150 feet of frontage on Pimlico Pond Road. You'll note that the purpose of the plan is to rectify an encroachment of Lot 2 onto Lot 1. You'll see their existing driveway and the edge of lawn is encroaching on existing Lot 1, so they're proposing to create lots A and B and do an equal land swap. I believe this plan would be entitled to endorsement.
So you do believe it's an A and R?
I do.
Okay. So I have here the Planning Board four men, notice of filing of application with the Mashpee Planning Board. I won't read it, it's in the record here. This is to notify you that on June 27, 2023, an application for check endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval. So we are approving it, and I just...
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Lot 1 and Lot 2 exist now.
Correct.
Right.
And the only change is it's going from a dash line. This dash line is what's existing now.
That's correct.
Okay. So how did Lot 2 get created with only 130 feet of frontage?
Unclear to me.
Yeah, when was it created?
The lot could have predated subdivision control.
Yeah.
And whereas there was no minimum frontage requirement at the time of lot's creation. It is unclear at this time.
Well, what did you just say?
So...
Mary?
I got what the question is, and you said just now.
Based on the information here, I don't know how that lot only has 130 feet of frontage. For the purposes of endorsement of the A and R, I don't know if it's relevant, but I could certainly look into the question.
I think we should know that, so that we don't set precedent that we're approving a lot with less than 150 feet. Do we have time, do we have time to...
But that, that lot's already developed, though, right?
I think...
No, but you're, now you're endorsing it.
But you're not creating any new lots. You're not creating any new lots with, with or without any existing frontage. This is just for the, this is creating divisions of unbuildable lots to be swapped between two. I believe the plan to be entitled to endorsement. You have, I can't remember, 21 days to endorse an A and R after filing, which would be today's date. So if you're within 21 days of April 5, you have time.
Of July 5?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Well, 20, I'm just saying, your next meeting is when? July 9?
19th.
So yes, you could wait until July 19.
I'd like to know when that got created, because it's, it's less than 150 feet, and we still have time.
Yep, all right.
That's fine. You do have time. You have time within the statute.
So if we do endorse them, it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, it could be any time, I could come in the office and sign.
Well, the board will need to make the finding and vote that approval is not required.
Have to make it in a public, in a hearing, not a public hearing, but a...
So if, if, if the board wants to wait for that, answer that question, you have time within the statutory timeframe to, to wait. You have the time.
If you miss that time limit, what happens? It just goes through?
Yeah.
So it's no damage, so. All right, I'd rather, yeah, I'd rather just have that in our minutes.
So the question being, you know, the existing condition of current Lot 2 shows 130 feet of frontage. When was the lot created, and what justifies the 130 feet of frontage?
Yeah, yeah, well, how did this get approved with less than 150 feet? And Cape and Island should know that.
There are plan references on here, which I can pull up and take a look.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, so this will be put back on this, on the...
It will remain as approval not required on the July 19 agenda.
Do you want the large-scale plans?
I will keep them, yes, please. I can collect that after the meeting, Dale.
Okay, next one is the public hearing. Mashpee Planning Board, public hearing notice. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, and the Town of Mashpee Zoning Bylaw, Section 174-24(c)(9), the Mashpee Planning Board will hold the public hearing on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, at 7:20 PM at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willow Bend Country Club Special Permit. This application requests that the existing condition in the November 1991 Special Permit Modification Decision affirming the limit of the total number of bedrooms within the Willow Bend project area is 853, to 853 be amended, submitted by Mary Wagon, Mashpee Planning Board. So, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens the meeting at 7:10, which is continued from June 21, 2023. We do not have the proponent here, is he coming?
No.
No. So Evan, can you explain, going back, we were, we were left with the town manager and you figuring out a program to count the 853 bedrooms and any excess that would apply. Can you explain what steps you're taking to count the bedrooms that exist now in the special permit area and others Willow Bend is in the process of building?
Yeah, so just as a reminder, you guys asked to reopen the public hearing today so that I could report back to you subsequent discussions had with the town manager to do the necessary research to get the best available estimate of the existing condition relative to the bedroom count in Willow Bend's permit area. Just because the preparation of documents to perform the analysis is robust, so I needed to talk with the town manager to make sure he understood what I'm going to be asking from other departments in their time. Largely, this is resting with the building department right now. I did speak with Rodney and propose what I'm about to share with you now. I have a relative timeframe, and I'll be able to answer questions. Just internally, Town Hall transitioned about five and a half years ago to a new permitting software called Permitize. So going back nearly six years, not quite six years, but nearly six years, the town's record-keeping relative to building permits issued since then is has been, is quite good and is quite clear, and the data captured via that permitting software is, is very sound. So every permit issued within, nearing the statute of limitations of issuing permits within the past six years is attached to a specific bedroom count. So currently, the building department is going through Permitize address, or street by street utilizing the, you know, street listing that was provided to us by Willow Bend and their filing for Cranberry Point, utilizing assessor's data, to build me a file in, it's called Laserfish, but it's essentially our cloud, it's a municipal cloud that's, that archives files. So going back six years, that file will be populated with the specific building permits and building plans associated with a specific number of bedrooms. The building department's gone so far as to include in the title of the files how many bedrooms each property has. We're going to start with Permitize, that'll give us a glimpse going back into six years, nearly six years, because that's an important number, because that's the statute of limitations for which the building department could withdraw a building permit or take some other action having issued a permit erroneously or in error. Going past that four and a half, five and a half years is going to be a bit more complicated and require a bit more work for the sole reason in that record-keeping in the town, going back pre-permitize, is a little bit more disorganized. And building department records are stored in such a way, whereas each property, every property in the Town of Mashpee has its own independent file, and every decision, permit, inspection report is contained in one single file with hundreds of pages of documents within it. And so what I've asked the building department to do with those records is to populate each of those folders into the same master document, if you will, so that we'll have an understanding of the number of pages and number of documents that will have to be evaluated once that, once they're compiled. The likelihood is, once we get through the six year, you know, going back six years, we'll have a good number of how many bedrooms have been added within that statute of limitations. But going back further is going to be more of an intensive process, just because it's, it's far more tedious in the approach. And there's the potential to have to outsource that work for someone to go through each of the records. Building Department told me today that they're able to get through about 10 properties a day, five days a week, which is 50 properties per week, a little bit less than 300 properties, we'll say 300 properties for the purpose of estimation. This could potentially be completed in six weeks. Now, the full analysis is unlikely to be able to be completed in six weeks, the document prep is able to be completed in six weeks. We'll have, again, solid figures relative to the statute of limitations, but when we, absent onsite inspections, we're going to be, we're going to be dealing with estimates. Best available estimates with best available data, and it's unclear how solid it's going to be at the end of the process. But that's the approach we're taking.
All right, Evan, we're going back after the six years, but the statute of limitation already went by, so why, why is the purpose of doing that?
Well, we need to, like we had said in the previous, and when this public hearing opened, council, town council advised, you know, you're being asked to modify a particular condition that's quite specific in an existing special permit. And he felt strongly that the board should do their best to establish the baseline, what's the existing condition. We have an estimate using assessor's data, my number, my figure, I believe, was 995. He encouraged us to work with Willow Bend to get inspections of each unit. In the absence of being able to do that, it's unlikely we'll be able to be successful in 100%.
My other question is, since they violated the statute, the limit of beds, does that take away the statute of limitation because they violated the permit in the first place? Right, when you go to...
I don't think so, Dennis, because you have six years to discover the error and, and take action. Outside the six years, it's, your opportunity's passed.
All right, I got it, right. Then after that question.
I think, yeah, I think that's how I understand it, too.
Yeah, all right.
But it, it, it causes a problem with the special permit going forward.
Right.
So it causes a problem with the building permits going back six years, but it also causes a problem with the special permit going forward.
That's right.
Because it's not in compliance.
That's right.
Do you think that we should, we should authorize the hiring of a consultant, so, just so that they can start working on it?
Yeah, and have Willow Bend pay for it.
That's the issue, we talked about that the last time, the last meeting, and they were very reticent to...
We can pose the question to council, well, relative to legality of their, they're paying for the consultant. I mean, it's pretty clearly spelled out in the zoning by law and your special permit regulations to allow you to employ outside consultants at the expense of the applicant, so I don't think that's a problem, in my opinion.
It's Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53.
The only reservation I have doing that now is I don't have a solid grasp of the scope of review, how many documents, which, which is the process we're going through now. I think we'll have, we'll have to procure a consultant, staff won't be able to do it. But to write the request, the request for quote, I need to get a reasonable estimate of the number of documents that there need to review.
Yes. And what kind of ex, what kind of person would be that consultant?
I don't know, Karen, any recommendations?
Yes, first of all, you could have our engineer do it. Secondly, there's assessors, there's companies that assess property.
And we do have a consultant for assessing already.
So what do you, do you guys use Vision?
It's PK.
PK, so this, okay, so there's PK, there's Vision, there's, there's companies that work with assessors, and they, they research these types of documents, and then they, like, enter into the assessor's records how many bedrooms there are, and they do the inspections, you know...
I mean, it doesn't take particular skill, because it's a question of, can you read the document, do you understand what it says?
It's like a paralegal skill, level skill.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so...
Okay, so...
I would, I would see if that, I wonder if, is it PK?
Yeah.
I'd call them and see, or the town, talk to the town assessor to see if that's something. The other thing I was thinking of that you might be able to glean was the, the DEP records, right? You mentioned that a little bit, the DEP records?
So the other component of this whole research endeavor is board health-related. Since they're on a wastewater treatment facility, Board of Health doesn't have a bedroom, a solid bedroom count like they would for approving septic systems, because DEP is the approving authority of the wastewater, is the permitting authority for the wastewater treatment facility. So their records aren't giving us the data that we need, so we need to obtain the, the submitted documents that Willow Bend's provided to DEP to get authorized to expand the connections. I've asked them for that, and they're expected to produce that.
Did you, did you find out if they're going to give those to us?
I feel confident they will, I had a conversation in that regard.
They said they're, is it going to take some time?
I don't know how long it will take, but they're going to provide the two at the reopening of this public hearing once it's continued tonight.
Okay.
And the other thing is that this is a condominium complex.
Yes.
Right? Do you have a copy of the condominium docs?
The master deed?
The master deed, the declaration of condominium trust?
I'm sure it's somewhere in my office, but...
Because I felt like, people were saying, and I, I'm not sure if I understood, one of the people that came to speak to us, he sounded like he had bought lots, right?
Yeah.
So he had to have been given a copy of something that talked about bedrooms, and I wonder if that's, because each house, each lot is linked to a certain septic or water flow capacity, there must be something in their condo docs that talk about number of bedrooms or flow or something. It might be good to get their condominium docs, I know they're registered at the Registry of Dees, but...
So what you're saying, those people who just have lots now should have been on notice about this limitation?
Right, and, and that, there was some other person, he was very nice, and he talked about maybe wanting to add bedrooms to his property, but he must be, he must have to get approval from the condominium association. So it'd be kind of nice to know what that process is, because if, if there's a process that you have to apply to the Willow Bend Condominium Trust, whatever they call themselves, whatever association or trust, oh, like, like, like I live in a condo, I think you live in a condo, right? Like, for certain things, you have to ask the condominium association for permission. So that, I can't imagine that condominium association doesn't have the number of bedrooms, right? Because it's linked to their DEP permit.
Yeah.
So it's like another way to kind of check, right? You'd have the building department information, you'd have the assessor's information, you'd have DEP's information, and you have the condominium trust information. And I think if we come out with relatively the same number, you know what I mean? We can, I feel like we can find that, that the existing condition here for bedrooms is this.
Understood.
You know, another question I have, when they first did their permit, they had 280 bedrooms, so they had to build a septic system 150 times over what that 284 bedrooms could take. Now that they've been adding all these houses, so they have to upgrade this, I'd like to know if they have to make this septic system bigger.
Even though they're not using anywhere close to their capacity?
Yeah, but that's, that's when you, like, they always make them add.
Oh, all right, so even, so even if a wastewater treatment facility is only at 50% capacity, DEP makes them build something that's bigger, they can't use the full 100%.
That's what I said at the, at the last meeting, I said, so when the DEP came in there, they're looking at this house in the permit, three bedrooms, okay, that takes 100 gallons of flow, and that system could accept it, but now you go two years later, and that's five bedrooms.
Yeah.
So they add two more bedrooms, so they add like another 50 gallons of water to that system in all those houses, that could add up, I wonder...
What Willow Bend's attorney asserted at the last opening of the public hearing was that it's at 80% capacity is when DEP intervenes for expansion or some other...
Okay.
That was what the statement of, of Jack McLean was, at 80%. I can't recall exactly what that 80% triggers.
Or to expand it?
But I think the DEP reports that are provided to us, assuming that they're voluminous and, and complete, will shed some light on the issue, I'll pull the master deed and condo docs and continue the research.
They do check it all the time, so...
Yeah.
Exactly what...
It might help us grasp, like, what is going on.
Exactly what was said was, the DEP capacity, calculating the 853 bedrooms, was 110 gallons per, per bedroom.
Yeah.
The design capacity is 113,000 gallons per day, and the max they had was like, usage was 80,000 gallons per day around July 4.
Yeah. The whole, the whole basis of their argument was that even, even the fact that they're over, they're still not meeting, they're not meeting up.
Yeah, I was curious about that.
If the DPE has a formula based on, you know, years of whatever they did to get that, they may be unlikely or unwilling to bend on that formula, even though the actual flows are well within, you know, their guidelines based on, maybe their formula was over-aggressive for the flow of the, you know, the 283, or 283 houses. But the DPE is a big organization in the state, and, you know, big organizations don't change their policies very well, easily. So they could, they could be up against a brick wall with that argument of saying, oh, we're 80% of our flows, we're well within, so let's, let's ramp it up in bedrooms, the DPE might say.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we're going to be looking at condo documents, that, that means more work, that means more work and more time.
Well, I mean, it's not a short timeline by any means, it won't be.
You say six weeks just to get it all in the system?
Yeah, with this, going back six years, establishing that number of bedrooms is pretty simple, that should be sooner, but to get the complete picture will take six weeks, more or less.
Okay, so we're going to continue this...
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
So I think that we should enter into this public hearing, the March 24, 2023, additional information?
Yes.
From Cranberry Point.
Previous one, it's a letter from Willow Bend.
Stanek, the Stanek one?
Yep, and it's signed by Troy Miller, and it has in it, as Exhibit A, the whole, the, the list of properties.
Yeah.
Right? But, right, it has that report from Sand Tech.
Sand Tech.
And I think Dale might need this, but, but it has stuff about the wastewater treatment facility in that. It also says something weird, it says, "The Willow Bend community consisting of over 300 homes."
So do they, I wonder, I wonder if Troy was rounding up?
Well, I did know when I was doing my assessor's analysis, count, doing the bedrooms, based on the streets they gave us, so I just need to be confirmed that every, because I need to confirm every property in Willow Bend is contained in their special permit area. There might be Willow Bend properties that are not in the special permit area, so it's logical they might be 300, but not governed by the special permit. But when I, because when I queried using the streets, there's like 299 or 300 properties exclusive of their commercial properties, like the clubhouse and some of the other facilities in the site, so...
But not 299 homes?
This was, this was structures with, with, with bedrooms attached to it. So there may be, there's something to evaluate there.
Because there's a limit on units.
There is. So my, my, my first thought, and I haven't evaluated this yet, was there may be a street there that Willow Bend acquired the development rights to, but isn't subject to their special permit. We will want to ask this question of Willow Bend on August 5.
So when, when we look at that list, are we thinking all these homes are in the special permit area?
That's the assumption made when I performed the initial analysis.
But they might not be.
Yeah.
Because Troy said there's 300 homes, and repeatedly, the project proponent has says they have not gone over 287.
Right, rounding up, maybe.
Maybe he rounded up, or maybe he, maybe they, Willow Bend has homes that aren't, they're part of the wastewater treatment facility, but not part of that special permit.
All right, they could have acquired property, you, you need to, the board needs to specifically authorize the annexation of additional property, so if you haven't done that, and they've acquired property, it may be subject to, it may be in the Willow Bend community, but not bound by the terms of the permit.
Okay, well, we're not doing that tonight, so...
It's a question to be asked, for sure.
Yes, of course. So we need a motion to, sorry, I apologize for this. To, what did you say, Dennis?
I'm going to have to look at the minutes, because I can't remember everything that's happening on August 5.
Well, I have a day here for August 2 for the 12 units, so we'd want to put it on the same day, wouldn't we?
Yes, I just can't recall what time you established those hearings for.
At 7:20, August 2 for...
That's for the...
The 853 bedrooms.
The other two are 7:10 and 7:15?
7:10, you want 7:15?
No, I'm just asking, there are two other hearings you continue to that date.
What, just tell me what those are, is Milagney?
One's the Milagney Public Hearing, and the other is Cranberry Point. So I just want to make sure you don't establish a time that conflicts with the two you continue, so just let me refer to the minutes, if you wouldn't mind.
Let's, let me write this down, because the 12 units is, is 7:10.
On page 10, here's, Miss Wagon made a motion to continue the public hearing.
So yes, one is continued to 7:10, so yes, you can continue this to 7:20, and you'd have Cranberry Point 7:10, the 853 at 7:20, and Milagney at 7:30 for August 2.
Make a motion to extend this public hearing to 7:10 on Wednesday, August 2.
How do you vote?
I think 7:20 was supposed to be...
No, oh, wait, 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 wait.
7:20.
Aye. Dale?
Wait, wait, wait.
Now wait.
This says, the motion on page 8, motion to continue public hearing for 275 30% Avenue to August 2 at 7:10.
Correct, so that time slot's occupied.
So, so this motion should be to 7:20.
Correct.
Yes, yes. And Milagney, 7:30. Do we need a supermajority?
No.
No. For this vote?
No.
Okay, you said yes, I say yes, Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
So the, the motion is to continue to 7:20 on August 2.
Correct, yes. Does everybody have that? 12 units, 7:10, 853 bedrooms, 7:20.
Oh, I see.
And Milagney, 7:30. Okay, new business. New business. Vote to set public hearing date for special permit application submitted by Chelco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless for a proposed personal wireless service facility cell tower at 524 Great Neck Road North, Assessors Map 67, Parcel 4. Now, since this is a development of regional interest.
Impact.
Impact. DRI to build a cell tower, because it has everything to do with a big group of people, this has to be an immediate referral to the Cape Cod Commission. But all we're doing tonight is just setting a hearing date.
Setting the hearing date so it can be advertised in a butters notice.
Okay.
One thing, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I included in the public hearing notice to, a request to set this at the second meeting in August, because you have such a big agenda on the second. That's well within your 65 days to open the hearing. I did receive an email from Carl Gearing, who's representing the applicant in this case, relative to pushing it two weeks to August 19?
August 19?
I can't remember, the 16th, on August 16th.
Okay.
And, you know, I wanted to give my, some time for my new staff person to go through the motions of noticing, but he wanted to make you aware that there's actually a federal timeline, a stop clock, if you will, of 150 days for a decision to be rendered, notwithstanding Massachusetts General Laws or the Cape Cod Commission Act. So he requested, I ask you if we could do it on August 2nd. My office can do it, but.
I'd say that's, that's a bit much, because we've got three public hearings, and it'll be a long, long night.
Ultimately, it's still within your 65 days.
Yeah.
So it takes three minutes?
Yes.
Because you can't?
We could do it.
We could do it at 7:05.
Yeah, let's do it that.
And, and nobody, people will be here, but typically Evan explains that we're not gonna take public hearings.
I put it in the butters letter, I put it in the public hearing notice. Yeah, I mean, my, we can accommodate it. I was just trying to relieve the pressure on Karen a little bit, but we can accommodate.
Okay, so, so do I hear a motion to set the public hearing for the cell tower to be built by Chelco for August 2nd at 7:05?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. 7:05. Let me just write that down. Okay, now we have, this is moving pretty fast here. It's P A. Okay, new business. Oh, that was the new business. I didn't read the public hearing notice on the cell tower.
It's not a public hearing, so you're, it's okay.
Because it's not happening tonight.
That's just for your knowledge of what the scope of the application is and what I'm suggesting for dates.
Okay, on the Pesci invoices, he's got, the first one is Aquay Highlands, it covers engineering services from November 16, 2022 to June 2023. Goes to the second page, and the balance due is $6,699.40. Third page is project and location, construction and inspection for 10A and 10B Teal Circle. You say that's in Willabend?
It is.
Services, professional engineering services, November 18, 2022 to June 23, 2023. Balance is $461.66. The next one is construction and inspection service for Country Club Estates for the period of January 6th, January 18th to June 23, 2023. Balance is $673.63. Next, construction and inspection at 17 Silver Leaf Lane. Engineering professional services, February 21 through May 17, 2023. Balance owed, balance due is $1,635.24. And the last one is New Seaberry Cottage, Phase 3, engineering review and elevation survey services, December 21, 2022 through March 24, 2023. Balance due is $3,364.21. May have a motion to accept these invoices submitted by Ed Pesci Engineering and agree that they be processed for payment.
I just have a question. Teal Circle, is that, is that an open project with us?
If you remember.
I never heard of it.
It was a minor modification, this was related to a minor modification requested by Willabend that you approved. It had an existing shared driveway, and they wanted, I can't remember exactly the scope of the request, but it needed, the existing driveway needed, the shared driveway needed to be evaluated, the base construction needed to be evaluated to support fire apparatus. So Ed needed to go out, they cut the pavement, he evaluated the base course.
So it's something that came before us, okay.
Yes, it did come before you.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those not in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Charlie.
I, I, I think Charlie grossly undervalued himself later in his career, man.
He completely did. It's very typical that that happens.
It has been a big adjustment, figuring out the budgeting with the transition.
But all these costs go to the applicant and the property owner?
With the exception of projects that were previously permitted, like Country Club Estates, for example, old permit, 1973, we already captured, we captured those fees a long, long time ago.
Okay.
But we, I maintain a budget to deal with those, those issues as well, which is now much healthier than it was last fiscal year. So we're good.
Next. I don't know what's the matter with me tonight, I apologize so much. Old business, declaration of default, Aquay Highlands, tripartite agreement dated March 20th, 2019. Okay, Ed is not here, so he's not able to certify anything, so what do we do?
Well, I, I was expecting Ed, but he is not here. He wrote a letter.
Yeah.
I wanted him to provide you a report relative to the inspect, to the, to the paving that was completed, 21st, I think, of June?
Yeah.
Sometime around then. The paving is complete.
Yep.
We've had a lot of rain. I have received photos from the developer, everything does appear to be functioning generally as is expected in accordance with the design. It included the installation of a drop inlet basin near 83, between 83 and 86 Blue Castle Drive, which was completed, and I received photos from the developer as to its performance. It is performing. The only complaint I've received since completion of construction was for the gentleman, I want to say it, he's on Blue Castle Drive, one of the subdivision lots, he had the concern about his driveway sitting too low, and after the paving, the drive, the finished course pavement would be higher than his pavement, so they milled it. Ed, he has, he's having some pooling of water at the end of his driveway. I submitted the photograph and report to Ed, who said something along the lines of, it was to be very challenging to get his driveway perfect because of the grade plane of the lot and the elevation of the driveway. It seems as though the construction of the driveway didn't consider the finished elevation of the road. And so I think this is a conversation that I'll have to facilitate between that particular property owner and Jacques.
Yeah.
As a matter of, maybe a building code-related issue, or I'm not 100% certain, but as far as subdivision control goes, I feel that the developers moved quite a bit here, and you'll note in Ed's letter that he's also working towards proper maintenance of the unimproved portion of Blue Castle Drive. Not completed yet, but progress is being made. So that's the one complaint I've received subsequent to paving.
That driveway, was that driveway constructed by?
Yeah.
This, okay.
Yes, yes.
I went up there the day after, and I met three people, and they were saying, oh. And we said, we gotta see when it rains. Every time it rained, I went up there, it seemed like it was working. But I noticed, when I was sitting there, I was looking down, that driveway. I thought something's wrong.
The driveway's just too low.
But the water coming in before this, all they had to do was raise the driveway a little, and then come out, you know?
Yeah, so I know the property owners expressed that he's, that he is amenable to that. I'll be speaking to the developer about the complaint, and we'll see if, if we can resolve that issue for the gentleman. But the, you know, conservation violations have been addressed, the trailer is gone, skid steer is gone, the cleared area of the conservation lands have been vegetated with the requisite number of native trees. The, the matter relative to the mountain of dirt has been unresolved, but I must say that that is my fault. I, I need to follow up the building commissioner in that regard. That's the status of Blue Castle Drive. I, I think Karen, the chair, was questioning on how the board wants to leave this on the agenda. Ultimately, there's a few outstanding matters, the tripartite agreement that go beyond the paving, like the procurement of a traffic radar speed sign. So I'm gonna speak with Jacques about his intentions for completing the entire scope of the tripartite agreement, or coming back to you with a new security, or an updated tripartite agreement. Relative to the declaration of default, the, you know, the main impetus for, for contemplating the declaration was the drainage, were the drainage challenges, specifically at 86 Blue Castle Drive, which seemed to be substantially resolved. So I don't think, I think it's up to the board if you want to keep this on an agenda until we have some resolution relative to the traffic sign.
I think so.
Or relative to, or having him come back with some proposal for a new security, if he doesn't want to complete the remaining line items within the agreement.
I think we should keep it on the agenda. I mean, this is a radar speed sign, it says, the cost is 3,000, this was probably, I don't know when, oh, this was probably done in 2019.
Yeah.
So it's probably a lot more. So he has the opportunity to just.
Get her done.
Pay it for cash, or amend the.
So he can buy it? He can buy the sign and deliver it to the town and have that condition be satisfied?
Yeah.
Or he can secure it with cash or a performance bond? But once the, every item in that agreement is satisfied, there's no, then the subdivision is, is complete at that point.
So if we keep it on the declaration of default, even though he's not necessarily in default land now?
We can, we can keep it on the agenda, allow me the time to ask him the questions I just kind of raised you relative to the driveway, relative to what his intent is to finalize and complete the entire scope, and maybe see what his interest is in coming back to share that with you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to maintain the declaration of default on the agenda to see what Mr. Moore was willing to do to remedy these outstanding items on the tripartite schedule?
So be.
Second?
Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The whole business, I want to ask Evan. I went down to Kenny Moss's property, and that's confusing. You got, okay, you're coming from the school, you turn in. Coming from the high school, you turn in, and then the middle lane. What's that middle lane? You go both ways, or? There's no lines, I tell you. Then I went down there when it was foggy out, and I'm saying, wow, if there was a lot of people coming here, and I'm a little hip, a little drunk, and I come, no, come out of that little thing, and a car's coming down, you don't see it, there could be an accident there. There's gotta be some type of lines, even now, if they're temporary, to show, there's people living in there now.
Yeah.
To show, okay, when you're on this, you gotta go this lane, the middle lane. I don't know if that's where the car's coming down to go in, or what, it's confusing.
I understand. Don't drive drunk.
Not like, everything's gray, you know what I mean? And so.
There's gotta be signs to put up saying entrance.
Oh, okay.
20 feet on the other side coming down both sides.
We, you know, there's a, there's a, again, a completely approved redesign of that intersection. Ken needs to, Ken's expressed a willingness to make those modifications. Again, he's not compelled to do it, there's, it's not a condition of his subdivision approval. We could try and put it through some formal process, otherwise, you know, Prime Homes needs to come back to you for regular lot releases. That's gonna be a good opportunity to address that particular issue with, with, with Ken.
Can we invite him in?
Sure we can.
Do you want to invite him in, Karen?
All right, now he's got a road he already put in, the one we already approved.
Yeah.
It looks like there'd be another one of the houses going in.
And, and just remember, Dennis, he has, he has the rights to construct all of the existing roadways there, he just needs to come back to you for lot releases. So he can build all the utilities and the infrastructure.
When I get there, there's gonna be more traffic coming out of that one spot.
There's a lot, there's, I think there are 81 lots in there.
Yeah.
That's what, that's my memory, though, don't, don't quote me on it.
Well, that was, that configuration was approved at plan review?
That was approved in 1973.
Oh, the roads?
Yes.
All property there.
Yeah, but I mean, we're talking about the entrance and the.
And so when I, the year I started, 2018, you know, the, the planning board affirmed that approval in like 2001?
Yeah.
And it included the, the current, the as-built intersection design you see now. The former planner, the former engineer, I think the, some members of this board and former members of the planning board expressed dissatisfaction with the current design, and asked what the developer's willingness would be to reevaluate or redesign that intersection with, you know, traffic safety in mind. They did provide a plan, this board did approve a new design in 2018. And in, when Ken first came back for lot releases, we were contemplating how to, you know, because Ken just built that intersection, even though we had already designed it as, as originally designed, even though we had approved a new plan. And so at the time, we couldn't compel him to change it, because it's not, again, not a condition of a subdivision approval. So when we thought about securing it, Charlie at the time felt that we could secure it, you know, the, the construction in accordance with the updated approved, the updated design as opposed to the old design. But in the end, we need to understand what Ken's willingness to do it is. Ed and I have met with him on the subject once, along with the DPW director. There are some shared obligations here between the town and the developer, mostly regarding like tree pruning and some clearance of vegetation within the road layout, the town road layout. DPW has expressed a willingness to do that work. What has, what has been missing is coordination to get it done.
What about the golf course there, too? They have their own exit.
They do.
Just a little further up from where you're coming in.
Yeah.
That's a, I don't know, to me, that's a disaster waiting to happen.
That's the status.
What, I wonder what the accident rate is right there at that, because sometimes when you make that turn, the car coming down the hill is so close to you.
No, in the winter time, it's, well, I'd say I.
Yeah.
You slide.
I was actually hit on that news.
The good news for everyone is that, that particular intersection will be involved, included in the study area for the 209 Old Barnstable Road Traffic Study that I had the Trust authorize a few weeks back, so we'll know more.
May I interject something? That intersection, and I recall the meetings we had back when we had the modification, and it's, it's shared with DPW. Why can't DP, my, my concern is the trees and the trimming on the other side of the road, coming around the inside of the curve.
Yeah.
That needs trimming.
I would suggest for the purpose, since this conversation's getting bigger than it probably should be, given the agenda, I will ask Ken if he has a willingness to come to the board to discuss this issue, and we can expand on these issues further.
Okay.
But, but the other side is Catherine, right?
Yes.
I mean, that, that's an independent activity, I would think.
Understood.
So are you suggesting that we, we talk to DPW?
Yeah, yeah, to, it's an isolated, you know, issue on this intersection that could be handled.
I'm happy to follow up on this issue. It's been, it's been an ongoing issue for a number of years, but, you know, let's make sure something gets appropriately on the agenda.
Do we need to do a motion for it to?
No, I wouldn't take any motion on this, you know, and, and we'll defer it to another agenda.
So which date would that be? Whatever?
I'll, I'll advise.
Whatever, okay. All right. Board Engineer Report, Projects Review and Inspections, I guess we pass on that tonight. My report, well, I think everybody pretty knows now that, you saw the Select Board meeting a week ago Monday, that it was unanimous approval, it was very spirited, and it was really nice. nice, where the board agreed to allow the town to submit the application for the state revolving fund loan, zero interest loan money, to get to the debt, by the deadline, August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. So we have money to continue the building for year two thousand and twenty-four. So that was good news. On water quality issues, it was really distressing to see that Old Silver Beach North, Falmouth, was closed on June twenty-ninth. That's in Ocean Beach, and because of high bacterial count, they didn't say what the, what, what the bacteria was, maybe you know now, but it's kind of disturbing that it's in the ocean now. And water quality, I hope, I hope the tree preservation bylaw passes, because it's gonna do a lot for the nitrogen overload, and it will stop the clear cutting of lots during building activities. Anybody have anything else to say about the water? Mary?
DEP put out their new regs, remember we were talking about that?
Sure did.
So there was a lot of pushback on DEP putting out the regs for, it's, it's a change to Title V, and if I understand right, it's impacting communities on Cape Cod that haven't met their water quality goals for nitrogen in our estuaries. And so we have five, we have X amount of years to.
Two years for the watershed permit.
Right, so we, our town has two years to submit for a watershed, a twenty-year watershed permit. Otherwise, we have to replace all our Title V systems with enhanced systems.
And I scanned that, and if some towns are not going along with this, they're gonna have to put in IAs.
If you don't obtain a watershed permit, yes.
Yeah, and then, and some are objecting to this.
Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Falmouth, I thought it was dead because of Falmouth.
Falmouth rejected it, and then they kind of changed the law.
Okay.
That's what they did, because they realized, when it, when it first come out, when it was real strict, anybody would have cut the system, over so many years.
Okay.
They'd have to go alternative system, but now, they're giving that twenty-year period.
For new construction only, is that what?
New construction now, you have to get a, a new system. And addition to your house, you have to get a new system. But within that twenty years, the state's gonna come back in five years and say, Mashpee, we think you're not going fast enough. And then they can start saying, okay, Dennis, you have to put a new system in, you know?
Okay.
So the town's gotta keep on moving this ahead. You have to put Phase One and go to sleep.
Okay.
You know, so, people are still confused with what's really happening. But in five years, too, the state can say, we think everybody's gonna put an alternative system in. You know, the DEP can say, we have to do that, you know?
That will have a tremendous effect on the town, the burden. You know, if it's thirty-five thousand.
They're forty years late.
Thirty-five thousand dollars now, there'd be fifty in a few years.
Oh, yeah.
It's different when you're building your new house and you have the expensive system than like thirty years later upgrading.
When I was on the SOAR Commission with me, Tom, and John Kellam, we were gonna hire Brian House, he might have five hundred thousand, and I said, I tell you what, give me five hundred dollars, and I give you the same report Brian's gonna give you, we have too much nitrogen. I said, we should take that money and stop building a mistreating plant.
Yes.
I know.
And, and we would have, people would have been in, people would have been used to the price, and Tom, he laughed at me, saying, he goes, we have to do studies, because you can't get any money unless you do a study. I goes, the study's gonna tell you, we have too much nitrogen, you know, and it's only getting worse.
Yeah.
That's a little history.
That's history.
I'm on water, okay, I'm sorry, water quality, bacteria in the ocean, what are we going to do, how can we stop this bacteria from getting into our ponds? Because people are gonna, they're gonna clean their boats in Mashpee Pond.
Oh, yeah.
John, they're gonna clean their, that's what they're doing now. How can we address that? How can we address people bringing their boats into our ponds, flushing out there?
We have a bylaw, can't we?
Well, it's, it's enforced by the harbor master.
Do they dump their septic into the water?
What he's worried about is, you know, someone goes to, you know, on Pop and Esset, and then they don't wash their boat, and then they bring it to Mashpee Wakeby. It is, it get, it's monitored at the boat ramps, but they can't catch everybody. State, state intervention, harbor master has the right resources, I don't, I don't really know, but it's enforced at the harbor, by the harbor master.
Yeah, you know, some, some people bring their boats for the reason of cleaning out their motors in, in the freshwater pond. And Mashpee Pond's had at least two closures, cyanobacteria closures already.
I know.
Very early in, very early in the season, extraordinarily early for Mashpee Pond.
The stick of science saying no flushing of engines on, from the, you know, you know.
How do you know, how do you know where the person was before they got to the pond?
Right.
Yeah.
You know?
Has cyanobacteria ever been in Mashpee Wakeby Pond this, this early, I mean, is this most, the earliest time ever?
Absolutely, and I, it was either last summer or two summers ago was the first time Mashpee Pond's has faced a cyanobacteria closure. This is like a new, this is a new development for Mashpee Pond, it's, it's a very big pond.
I would like to know what happened to that dog, because we, someone spoke, you probably know about it, Mary, at Amity Day.
I haven't, I haven't heard what happened to the.
And the dog got very sick and went to the vet, and the vet said, there's no cure, we have nothing to do for the dog, the dog's sick, so I don't know whether the dog died or dog drank water in the pond.
Yeah, that's.
You know, I just don't want this to be the tip of the iceberg, it just feels so bad.
And now that you say, old, old silver, you know, that's, like you said, it's ocean.
That could have been E. coli form though.
I'm assuming it was E. coli form.
Yeah.
E. coli and stuff like that.
Yeah, E. coli.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on water? No. Town planners report.
Second Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee Workshop is Thursday, twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, I'm not looking at my calendar, I just set the date this afternoon, it's the twenty-seventh at six-thirty. Felt four-thirty was a little too early before, so six-thirty. We will have a press release going out, materials, we'll notify stakeholders as we typically do. If you can't, I, I, I think it's, it's a simple event to participate in, little time commitment makes it easy for you, you're gonna do it from home, participation was low for the first one, so please join us and take a friend with you if you can.
So we'll get the Zoom?
You will get the Zoom.
Oh, okay, they're gonna do a Zoom again?
Similar setup as before.
It's so much fun, it's so much fun, because like you did, you've done before. It's polling, it's live polling and surveying right then and there, and it's, it's really a blast, because you know right away what people are kind of thinking.
The interactive nature of it is, is good, so it's, it's an hour commitment, and it's a substantive hour, you know, it's not four hours of your day, you get a lot.
Hazard mitigation is usually boring, so I mean, it was really worth it. Like, I bet like that your government affairs committee would, would go, it was very interesting. And anybody who, who lives in low-lying areas, get in that meeting, because, because one thing, we didn't have enough people from around, like spread around town, that live near roads that flood. That was pretty weak, the answer for that was really weak.
Right.
So.
Next, the, you may have seen in the newspaper, I think this past Friday, but July thirteenth, Harbor Management Planning Committee is holding its second public workshop at the New Seaberry Clubhouse. I can't recall the time, you'll, you'll have to forgive me, it is in the enterprise. Lastly, Housing Production Plan, we are underway with our consultants, at the very early stages, auditing the two thousand and fifteen plan, doing some general literature review, data collection for the consultants, and on July eleventh, next Tuesday, I'll be meeting with the consultants along, with the Affordable Housing Committee and our consultants to kind of lay out the process and engagement opportunities. Subsequently, to the Affordable Housing Committee, we'll be meeting at the end of the month. I presume, I believe, my understanding from my presentation to the Trust, Affordable Housing Trust a week and a half ago, they had wanted to see, have a similar session with the Trust at the end of July, which I believe is the twenty-fifth. Is that a Monday?
No, the twenty-fourth is a Monday.
Maybe it's the twenty-fourth, but I have to confirm that with the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust.
And where would that be, in, in this room?
In this room, in this room. So more updates to come relative to Housing Production Plan. I will need to coordinate with the planning board, I think sometime in the near future, to establish a joint meeting with the Select Board to get this adopted and submitted to DH, well, adopted by both boards at one meeting as opposed to doing it at two, for submission to DHCD sometime in December. I need to get the availability of the Select Board, either at our meeting or at their meeting, to convene jointly for that review. We want to settle that now, as opposed to sometime in November. You want to have a separate meeting? I'm just concerned about, we, we have a grant from Cape Cod Commission, we need to submit this to DHCD by the thirty-first of December, so hitting two meetings just puts a crunch on that timely. So that's the real purpose of meeting jointly, is to expedite.
I anticipate having a lot of comments, that's the only thing.
Understood.
So.
I mean, so the joint meeting, if I remember our schedules, the draft schedule is being presented to the Affordable Housing Committee on Tuesday, but if I remember the schedule correctly, the Select Board and the Planning Board should have a draft, a complete draft with a month-long comment period prior to that meeting. So, just want to make that clear.
Okay, Board Member Committee Reports, Cape Cod Commission.
Wait, so when do you think the draft is gonna be available? End of August?
I don't think that soon, no, I think like end of October, early November.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. Committee Reports, Cape Cod Commission.
Cape Cod Commission, so the Cape Cod Commission, two-day summit called One Cape, is July thirty-first and August first. Do we have any money for us to go?
Always, yep.
Yes.
Received yours.
I already, now, do you need anything more from me?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll process it for you, Rob.
I'm right on top of it.
All right, let's all go, it's all about water and housing, environment and climate change, it's all the stuff that we're talking about ourselves, so it's, it's.
Community Preservation Committee?
We meet tomorrow.
Sign review, no, no meeting, plan review?
No meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee?
No meeting.
I have some updates, though.
We have some updates.
So, David Whedon is the Chair.
Right.
And he got appointed by the Select Board at, as the Select Board's person, and he's gonna convene the meeting, and he received the minutes from this board appointing you.
Yep.
So he's got everything he needs to call a meeting, so stay on him. David.
David, now we crossed paths very briefly, he made, he made mention of it.
Yeah, because I think that there's, there's that stuff that, there's that water quality stuff that's not sewer-ing, it's gonna fall through the cracks unless that committee kind of really pushes forward.
Historic Commission?
No meeting.
No additional talk topics, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Bad meeting.